Good evening. Want to welcome everybody to the November ninth twenty twenty-one Committee of the Whole Meeting. Ms. Henry, would you call the roll, please?
Alderman Walters.
Captain.
Alderman Scott.
President.
Alderman Azier.
Here.
Alderman Hayden.
Here.
Alderman Myers.
Here.
Alderman Emerson.
Here.
Alderman Mary Jane Van Busker.
Here.
Alderman Bill Van Busker.
Here.
Alderman Mims.
Here.
Alderman Ward.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. I will ask for motion on the approval of October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved second.
So moved by Mary Jane Van Busker, accepted by Alderman Ryan Myers. Any discussion, any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Alderman Mary Jane Van Busker.
Yes.
Alderman Myers.
Yes.
Alderman Hayden.
Yes.
Alderman Bill Van Busker.
Yes.
Alderman Scott.
Yes.
Alderman Azier.
Yes.
Alderman Mims. Alderman Emerson.
Yes.
Alderman Myers.
Yes, again.
Sorry, Alderman Ward.
Yes.
All right, motion. Motion approved. In the discussion regarding future city code amendments, Chris Gilbert, planning and zoning coordinator, whatever you have for us.
Mayor, before Chris starts, go ahead and Chris in transitioning. Just wanted to say that tonight, we're doing a presentation on discussion items where many of these things are things that we've done are seen throughout our code amendments or throughout just staff in general that made some suggestions. So we're going to bring those to you all tonight to look over before we bring them to you as a board for any of the, any type of actual motion on them. Some of the items will either need to be go to planning and zoning before it comes to you as a board, and some will just come directly to you as a board. We thought it would be good to bring those items up now mainly as discussion. So you'll be aware of some things that have been coming up as we review. One of the things I ask the community development department with Ray and Chris is to review things that may have been coming up for code officers and things of that sort over the past months, year, sometimes a little bit longer. So I'll let go ahead, Chris, go ahead and take it from there.
Okay, Mr. Gilbert, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Aldermen. You all are, any of you all are familiar with text amendments that I bring before this body from time to time, and there have been some in the past couple of years, two, three years since I've been here. And some of them were very large and they are by and far operating as intended, which is nice. And but we're all always constantly looking for areas where we can improve and make the process work better. And tonight's one of those examples. Let me get the share screen up here and we'll go over what this is about tonight. Okay, tonight, these proposed amendments are regarding permit processes specifically for fences, outbuildings and driveways. At the present time, there are extreme limitations on these in our processes and ordinances. We do require, for example, for for driveways, any driveway expansion, we do require permits today, but we don't for replacement in place, which means that when something like that is done, well, I'll go into more detail later. We don't require any permits for fences and for outbuildings. We follow what the building code determines is the minimum size to trigger a permit requirement. So that leaves a big gap, which I'll cover later. Again, purpose increased focus on code enforcement has exposed numerous instances where property owners expand, replace driveways, build new fences, construct outbuildings without contacting the city for standards and guidelines. Many times this work is performed on weekends or in the evenings when staff is not on duty. The result is lengthy enforcement cases that consume a large amount of staff time each. That could have been partly prevented with plans and permits. And even even aside from all this, we we get cases where citizens or businesses will say, well, I talked to somebody in your department and they told me it was okay. And they can't give a name. They just said, well, we talked to somebody and you told me it was okay. So this permit process and requiring plans will help putting in the file on all these a plan and a permit to show who's responsible, who's doing the project, who approved it, and hopefully we can prevent some of these from happening. May advance the slide. We'll start with fences. Currently, no permit or plans required for building a fence. Chapter fifty of the municipal code, which is a zoning ordinance, contains standards for fence construction, including location, materials and height. Without a permit, all these factors can be reviewed for compliant or with a permit. All these factors can be reviewed for compliance and property owner can be notified a responsibility to know where the property lines are before any work is done. And nothing causes more neighbor versus neighbor conflicts than property line disputes. And a lot of those come up because people put up fences while they may not require permit, but they're not aware of where their property lines are. At least by coming to see us, they can give us the plans for their fence. We can approve the materials. We can approve the the height, those kinds of things, and then also give them the disclaimer. Do you need to know where your property lines are? We're not going to demand you get a surveyor, but there's only so many ways you can know this. One of them is to hire a surveyor, another one is to find your property pins. So we give them the the direction that they need to know where those lines are when they do the project. The city does not take responsibility for that particular issue. I have an example up here of this. This one was just put up recently. This is on, well, I won't say where I don't, I don't, it's being handled through our codes, but that's a front yard fence, which shouldn't be a six foot privacy fence in that location. So that's being managed right now. It's an example, just recently, another one, and we handle many of these every year with fence violations. Moving on to the second or the third item, driveways. Permits are required for expansions, but not for replacement of existing driveways. By adding a permit process for all driveway work, staff can review the plans, ensure the driveway replacement does not cause any issues with property lines affect the public right of way, thus requiring a public works permit and appropriate materials are used. And as part of this, we would also incorporate a standard for material thickness, for example, six inches of portable cement concrete or two inches of asphalt over a six inch roll stone base, for example. I'm not saying that's what it's going to be, but we can incorporate as standards can be reasonable that they can look at and be stated on the permit. This is what we need to see when we come out to do the inspection. Example of the driveway right here. Where project was done without a permit and we are battling this issue currently in codes. Outbuildings permits not required under two hundred square feet by the building code, which is a one car garage. So essentially, any any outbuilding structure smaller than a one car garage does not require permit. And we have no process by which to to inspect, gauge the progress, the the footing, foundation, whatever, as is right now, one hundred and twenty square foot outbuilding is just be plopped out there on skids and we may not even know about it for years if it's hidden behind the building and foliage and nobody sees it. By requiring permits for outbuildings will allow staff to review plans showing setbacks, distance from other buildings, lot coverage percentage, height and access. And by access, I mean if someone builds an outbuilding in the backyard that's intended to hold a vehicle, has to have a paved access to it. They can't just drive over the mud and grass to it. And will also allow staff to better regulate exterior materials used on outbuildings. So under two hundred square feet right now, we don't even know that it's been built. Let me give some examples of outbuildings on these next few slides that are not appropriate. There's, there's a two story one.
Can you please speak directly into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a two story one right here that was done that had to be shaved down due to height violation. But the square footage on the ground was under the minimum trigger permit. There's another example. And there's a material violation on that one. And that that's the extent of my slides. This is what we're trying to do is to address these three issues through the permit process, and we would come back later after assuming that that there's a desire for this to be addressed. We'll come back later to address the fee requirements that will come with it. We would, we would keep an eye towards having reasonable fees to cover the costs of staff doing the inspections, things like that. Mr. Mayor, that completes my presentation. So I'll answer any questions anyone has.
George.
Thank you. What brought this up? Were there any Aldermen that asked for this to be addressed? Has this been something the constituents and residents have been asking for? What's the impetus for this action?
Just looking at the, looking at things that happen over time. Yes, it's been brought up in different ways from Alderman. When they bring up different things as force fence violations that have happened over time along with property issues that may have happened over time that we feel like if we were able to review those, which is what Chris was stating beforehand, before they were actually installed or before they were actually constructed, that will allow us to head off some things that could cause some, like Chris mentioned, some disputes between neighbors along with other items. So.
So Damon, like the front yard fence, a permit wouldn't solve that, right? I mean, they're not allowed in the front yard. So if if somebody needing to get a permit is not going to stop some, somebody from building something where it's not allowed. I mean, they either don't care or they don't know. So how's that problem?
Sometimes they don't know. Sometimes they do not know. And and where you may not head that one off, you may head off ones in which they build it in the outside the right of way or right of way. And if you never review them or do not have anything to make, allow them to come in to have it reviewed or have it checked out beforehand, then you have people who are kind of going to their own devices. Typically, they're going to.
I'll just say, this seems like a complete overreach. I mean, I think we've got much bigger fish to fry in this town like our roads and our sewers. This to me just looks like city staff looking for an opportunity to grow their their size and their influence and power over normal people. I'm just, I'm fundamentally opposed to this. If you wanted to pick out one or two key items, you know, I think that might be reasonable to talk about, but to drastically increase the burden on on people trying to live and enjoy their homes. I just, I can't support that.
Yeah, I will be the opposite. Thank you for doing your job and looking out ahead of time to see what problems we can solve before they become major problems. It doesn't sound like it's an overreach to me whatsoever, and I don't really appreciate attacking the staff like that.
Well, I don't appreciate you feeling like you need to give comments to every single comment other Alderman.
Mr. Ward, you're out of order. That's enough. Okay, Ms. Mary Jane Van Busker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After looking at some of these pictures and some of this, the things that people have done, I think had they had they had to come to City Hall to find out how they could do it, what needed to be done, would have saved expense and time on the seniors or the citizens part. And I think it's a very good idea, and I think it'll keep the neighborhoods looking good. And I'm all for it. Thank you.
Mr. Ian Scott.
I'm going to give the benefit of the doubt to the some of the pictures that we saw that the people who installed things or in the process of installing things incorrectly, they just didn't know the know the guidelines and standards and stuff, and that would be exactly what this would apply to is that if you want to do something build a fence, whatever, all this stuff that you're addressing, you should know what you need to know in order to, in order to do that, and especially if there's not going to be a high fee structure to apply for the permit, but maybe a stiffer penalty if people don't apply, like a fine or something like that. If you go and do this without a permit, that would seem to me a good way of providing information for relatively inexpensively and help make sure that our city is put together, you know, correctly, essentially, and help help the average citizen to just know, hey, here's, here's the project I want to do. What's the correct way of going about this? We might even be able to provide them with information that they wouldn't know how to access for, you know, materials or processes to help them be more efficient in the project and accomplishing what they're trying to do. So to me, this seems like a pretty good service essentially, especially if the fee, if the initial fee, application fee is minimal. So that's seems good to me.
We'll take note of that. Thank you. I mean, that was part of the the come and bring something so you can have discussions like that. What you mentioned is Alderman Scott is, so we'll take note of that. No problem.
Mr. Azier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know there are a lot of constituents that would probably agree with Mr. Ward. But but I have a question for you, Chris. So you you mentioned in your presentation that there are there have been numerous cases or multiple cases where people actually don't get a permit because we don't require one. They're able to do work such as the pictures you displayed that indicate a violation of city codes. So what, what, what happens when they construct these buildings and fences? Do they stay up? How do we handle that?
They become code code enforcement cases, and our code officers pursue them with our standard process with notice letters and then citations if they don't respond and fix and correct the violation. With a permit, I'm sorry, with a permit process that would help with the enforcement process because we would have a permit, the lack of a permit as further evidence that the violation that occurred was was egregious, whereas right now, some of these don't have a permit requirement. And for example, with fences, they're saying that that they simply didn't know, and there's no permit required anyway when they're appearing for the judge. And so what we're trying to do in in absence of like, you didn't get a permit is we're going to them and saying, let's work this out. Let's figure out a solution that works for everybody and trying to convince them to correct it on their own without us having to take the heavy hand along. But sometimes we have some cases still lingering that have been going for a while where they're resistant to that. And those are difficult cases for officers to address.
Chris, in your presentation, I understood all of that. My question was, once they construct a fence or a building such as the one that you showed us in the video, what do you do about them after they're up? Do they stay up? Or we require them to, I mean, all of those things you showed us gone now?
They have to be fixed. Okay, the violation has to be cured. In the case of the two story outbuilding that was over height, they had to shave off a couple of feet off the top. In the case of of some of the other buildings that have had setback violations, we give them the option to either appear before the Board of Zoning Adjustment and attempt to get a variance or shave back so many feet off the building. That's actually happened in one case where they had to trim a building back to meet setbacks. So we we pursue compliance. It doesn't necessarily mean the whole building goes away, but it, we direct them toward compliance.
And fences, do you require them to remove them?
I'm sorry?
Senses, do you require them to move them?
Yes, we require fences to be in compliance. If there's a violation, then we will note that. And many times there's multiple violations if a fence is put up illegally. Not just, not just material, but height, location, all, there can be multiple violations that we're going after same time. And they are required to move the fence to be in compliance or to change the materials, lower the height. There's a number of options that we could pursue.
I appreciate that. One example I would share with the rest of the board is my ward in a driveway situation where they put a driveway in, they crossed a property line. That situation between the two neighbors went on for years and years. Because it's pretty hard to move the driveway and they suit each other and it was long drawn out and in the end, nothing happened. So I think that kind of reiterates why a permit might have prevented that. So I, in that way, I agree with it. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So Van Busker. And remind everybody, we got about ten minutes before we need to move on to the regular meeting, so. Van Busker, what do you have for us, sir?
So I can talk for nine and a half minutes?
I can't hear you.
I talked for nine and a half minutes then?
No.
Couple of questions, Mr. Gilbert. How will our residents know that permits are required for fences or for outbuildings? How are they going to be aware of that?
We have a number of methods to do that through social media to get the word out, and also we can, we can post internally in City Hall. And that's going to be probably the best way to notify the community. We do get a lot of calls already from from residents, and that's where we run into the problem with, and it actually happened today with a building where they will state that, well, I talked to you guys just last week. You told me this was okay. Well, who'd you talk to? We don't know. They couldn't give a name. So with the permit process also pins down who the approving authority is, and someone has to sign off on the design. That way they don't, we don't have citizens calling City Hall, getting someone and a staffer saying, yeah, that sounds like that could work, and that's, and it doesn't meet standards. So I think permits would solve a lot of these problems with confusion among the citizens as to what they need to do. Now, there are some who are going to just go do it anyway, and in that case, then we have a stronger tool in court in that no permit was pulled to add to the other tools our code officers use to enforce.
Would we put something in the sewer bills maybe to make people aware of of the need for for permits?
We could do fires.
Inform residents. My second question has to do with what type of fees are we talking about? How much, how much are we going to charge for these permits?
That's going to be a separate discussion that we'll have, but it's not going, it's not going to be designed to be egregious to the citizens of the community. It's going to be a fee essentially just to cover the inspection cost. We issued a permit and then we go out, we make sure that it was installed per the plan they gave us that we approved. And that's going to be, the fee is just going to cover that.
So I am, I am concerned about, you know, putting a burden on on people unnecessarily or adding to the cost, and I think that's one of the concerns probably that Mr. Ward had, you know, remarks he made.
And he'll have to come back in front of us before anything's done, so.
And and I am aware of fences that have been put up that didn't meet meet code requirements that have had to be removed or changed, and I'm aware that the people would have been aware of it upfront. Maybe, you know, that wouldn't have happened, but it's it's added to the cost of it sometimes when that, when that happens. But I just don't want to put a burden on the unnecessary burden on people. Will contractors who are doing work in the area, putting up fences or building outbuildings, are they, are they going to be aware of the permit fees and you know, do they, do they have to get some type of a permit before they do the, if they're contracted, do they do the work? How's that work?
Interestingly, they don't, for example, for fences, but most contractors in the metro are very good at calling the local city to find out what their fence standards are. I get a lot of those calls. Most of violations occur with just residents that put a fence up or a driveway expansion on a weekend. That's the biggest part of what we run into.
So could the permit be acquired by a contractor, by the resident, either way?
Yes.
I think that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Van Busker. Ms. Hayden.
In addition to the the minimum cost that you're saying is going to are reasonable fees to the, to the residents, what additional cost may be involved? For instance, I heard you say something about the design or will they have to submit architectural design for perhaps like an outbuilding or a fence line or something like that? I, I, I am concerned about some additional costs to the residents because we don't want it to be a burden. They're trying to improve their property, so we want to make sure that we're that we are sensitive to that. So what, do you anticipate any additional costs besides the reasonable fees that we're seeing?
Alderman Hayden, the, that's a very good question, actually. Very good, but I have an answer for you. As far as like for architectural design, that defers back to defaults back to the building codes to two hundred square feet or bigger to actually have plans. Anything under two hundred square feet, we're just looking at the zoning aspects here. Setbacks, materials, if is it compatible with the main structure or is it, you know, like ten? Those are things we'll be looking at. So there's no additional cost there. With fences, we just simply require the property owner to know where their property line is. If they want to hire a surveyor, that's their option to do that. Now with driveways, that's a slightly different matter. We've actually done this recently with property owners that have contacted us. If they're doing a driveway expansion and they want to pour concrete to their property line, and this is what Alderman Azier brought up earlier, concrete's pretty much permanent. It's very difficult to remove once it's there. So we have actually asked property owners to get plot plan surveys to us to show where their property line is before we allow them a permit for a driveway widening to, especially if their plan seems to go on their neighbor's property. We don't want to to approve of, issue a permit for anything that violates property line. So in some instances involving concrete, we might actually ask for them to define their property line to us before we issue the permit to avoid the situation that Alderman Asia brought up earlier.
And do you have an ideal of the cost involved in getting a surveyor?
No, surveyors vary widely in price, and we get a lot of citizens that call us over fence line disputes asking that very question. We can't make recommendations, but they do vary greatly in price. If you go with a local surveyor, the price is typically far lower. If you go with the bigger companies out of Kansas City or or the Kansas side, they're typically pricier. So there's a wide range and it's up to the property owner just to select the one they want to use that meets their budget and qualifications. All they have to have is a, is a Missouri registered land surveyor seal.
So do you, this is my last question. Do you find this, the property line issue with replacing existing fencing or existing driveway as well as putting in a new, new fencing and new driveway?
It can be a problem, particularly because we'll have, we'll have individuals approach us, property owners say, I want to replace my driveway. Okay, that's fine. As long as you don't expand it, and what happens is they expand it, and that would have required a permit. So at least with this process, with a permit, then we, we would have dimensions where their property lines identified, we'd have all that in the file, and a copy would also be given to the property owner when they take out in the field. And we will explain to them, we're going to come out and inspect, and this will be your, this is what we're going to be looking for. So anything you do that's outside of this would be a violation of the permit you applied for. So that gives us a lot more control over the improvement and hopefully doesn't violate the neighbor's rights when that concrete's poured.
And also Alderman Hayden, Alderman Hayden, and to all the Aldermen, we're looking at the same thing. We don't want to add a burden to them, but typically what ends up happening is burdens are added unintentionally or intentionally. And also we provide expertise in our inspections because a lot of times we go and look at driveways that are not poured to the correct the correct depth or not even this fence is not put in the correct location or the correct materials, and all of these are also what they paid for with their contractor. So going back to your question, Alderman Van Busker regarding a contractor, we'll notify them just like we notified contractors before. They need to get business licenses to work here in Raytown, but they also need to make sure they're providing our citizens the proper, the proper services when it comes to whether it be the fence, whether it be the driveway approach being replaced or removed and replaced. And the plot plan typically you can get a plot plan at the county to kind of look at your lot itself and then go from there. And a lot of times contractors will help you to kind of play if you're replacing existing or going with the current one and doing it within the same form. Driveway approach is not something someone typically does, but but. Uh, driveway approach is not something someone typically does, but, uh, but, uh, as far as a do it yourself situation. But a lot of times fences are and, and the tendency of just trying to put a fence and kind of eye it and figure out where it's at doesn't help in the long run if they're doing it on, on someone else's property. So there's several things we're just trying to look at, not with the added burden, uh, the fee and the permit is not the, not the, the stigmatism of this, to actually just try to help head off things that we've seen that have gone to court, as Alderman Asia mentioned. And even just kind of, kind of put a, uh, burden not only on those residents, but those who are coming behind them who may have not lived in that house before when those other things were created.
All right, here's the. Hang on just a moment, please. Here are the next people that are coming up and then we need to get this wrapped up. First is Mr. Myers, then Ms. Emerson, then Ms. Bims. And Mr. Asia, you wanted to speak again? Okay, Mr. Myers.
Uh, I think, I think Bill covered most of my questions. Um, the question popped up about how are we getting this out to citizens? I think Damon, this may be a good opportunity for a town hall meeting. You might make a note of that. Um, what was the other thing? I think the other ones were covered. So, um, I know we're hurting on time, but I guess the shed I'm building in my backyard needs to be finished sooner rather than later. Uh, I'll yield my time.
All right. Ms. Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have to agree with, uh, Alderman Ward. I think is that this is an overreach. The people that are going to do it incorrectly are going to do it without a permit anyway. And that's just added fees to the citizens and I, I just am not in favor of this at all. Thank you.
Ms. Bims. Ms. Bims.
Never mind. I'll say man until we get to Alderman's piece because we're late. Cause I did have my little hand up 18 minutes ago.
I know. I'm just trying to get to you, ma'am.
That's okay.
Okay. Mr. Asia.
Chris, you're not, would you clarify, are you expecting a driveway that's being replaced to have a survey? Yes or no?
The only time that we would talk to a property owner about giving us proof would be if they're wanting to pour concrete on the property line. Uh, to show us that they know where it's at, that it's been identified.
Thank you.
And again, all of this will be coming, would be coming before this board, before anything was approved or anything changed. And if I'm not mistaken, right, uh, if I'm not mistaken, part of this is also to, as we go along, fix other things that we might see that are wrong, not necessarily adding any burden to anybody, but making sure that we're saving people time and effort by having things, uh, more clearly spelled out. Cause we do have some, I know that are probably, um, needn't fixed. Mr. Walters.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, my only question is when we were talking, when you were talking about uh, surveyors coming out and determining where a property line is, does the city have somewhat of a, uh, don't, don't we show some of this on our own paperwork here as to where the property lines are already?
Uh, Alderman Walters, we do have a GIS system. The problem is when you have a three dimensional surface of the earth that you're laying two dimensional lines over, there's an offset. So our GIS is not a hundred percent accurate and we can't go off that to base property line locations.
You can be close enough in many cases where the property line is not next to a driveway in this particular instance.
I, I, I can't claim that because it, our GIS can be off by two, three feet in some locations. It's, it can be substantial.
So when you say it's this property line close to someone's property and you're wondering if they expand it, if they're impeding on somebody else's property.
Yes.
For instance, in my home, I have a driveway that goes, it's probably about eight feet from the property line. And I would never go that far, but would that be a question raised there or on the design work?
No, uh, you are correct from the standpoint that we would look initially at GIS and look at their plot plan that they give us, that they draw up. And if, if it's, uh, if it, if it's clearly away from the property line, a reasonable distance that the fudge factor in our GIS is not going to be a problem, then we're not going to ask them for a survey. But if their intent on some of these smaller lots is they only got eight feet and they want to use the whole eight feet to put a driveway around the side, then we're going to probably ask them to, to get a survey to prove exactly where that line runs. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Ms. Mary Jane Van Busker, you'll be the last.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think our citizens would much rather pay for a, um, a fee and get a permit than to put something in, have it all done, paid for, money out of pocket, and then the city come back and say, you know, I'm sorry, but this does not meet codes. I think then you are going to have a bunch of unhappy people. And so I, I don't see anything wrong with the permit as long as they're not sky high. I, I think that it's going to save the homeowner and the city of a lot of headaches. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mary Jane Van Busker. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Some move.
And second by Ms. Hayden. Let's do this by information. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? All right, we are adjourned and we will start.